It was up in the air for a bit, David.
All right. I decided to join live from the Brown School.
The lighthouse is looking good.
David, I have to tell you, I brought the kids over so Cecilia could see her classroom without kids. Because of her situation. And like, first of all, all the kids absolutely adored it. But to get Cecilia to be able to see a classroom and say like, this is Mike, like, it was just really exciting for all of us. So it was, the kids loved it.
Yeah, I think people have been going over and using the playground since the fence has been down. And people are really excited. So yeah, it's gonna be a, it's gonna be a night, a fun day on Wednesday in Marblehead, for sure.
On that positive note, I will call us to order at 7:01. And I will ask, does anybody have any commendations? I know, let's see, I'm not exactly sure which day it is. I think it maybe was over the weekend, but it was National Custodians Day. So especially given the Brown School and all of the moving and last minute details and everything. Megan and I were able to get a tour this morning and the custodians were all over the place, just doing everything that they could. And Todd was there. And so I'd give a shout out and a huge commendation to our custodial staff for everything that they're doing, you know, before school, and then they go over to their buildings during school, and then they're over at the new building after school. And just, you know, not only are they still under a lot of pressure with COVID, but with the new building coming online, just, you know, really above and beyond. So thank you to them.
No, I, I think that's a really great point, Sarah. You know, they've been spot on, Todd Bloodgood and his team. I don't know, starting about six weeks ago, getting some training on the building. And then when things started to move in with furniture and equipment, you know, we've bought out help from the vendor to set things up. But, you know, they're right there in the background, taking out cardboard boxes, understanding the systems, being trained. Tuesday, they were, you know, Todd was there with the Chief of Police and the Police Department on the security system. And yeah, I think that's a good commendation. And as well, you know, Steve Quicheck, the one man show, I'm sure there's some other people behind the curtain. But, you know, Steve's been there. I don't know, John, you, you know, probably for the last three weeks, testing every classroom to classroom, making sure the wireless keyboards are set up, the touchscreens. And so, yeah, a lot of, a lot of commendations there. But for me, just a continued recognition for all the teachers and staff. I mean, here we are, you know, six weeks into the academic year. And, you know, everybody's been dealing with challenges that have been put forward and. In school.
Oh, yes, actually, what's the address?
That's great to hear. And, you know, thanks for, to all the staff that are, that are working through all of this. And, you know, making the most of the situation to try and get us back to where we want to be, so.
Thanks, David. Sarah, did I see your hand up?
So I have two. The first one is obviously all the nurses have been going above and beyond, but particularly the village nurses. They've been there, I think, this week, every night till at least 6:30, 7 o'clock at night, going, you know, above and beyond, to do what they can to help us, you know, get ahead of the situation over there. So I just want to commend both of them for that. And then all the teachers that are packing up and moving and setting up classrooms, you know, for the second time this year. They're all amazing. And I think of the group, especially kindergarten and first grade teachers from the Gary, who now have packed up their classroom and moved it. I've lost track of the number of times in the last four or five years. But, you know, they still have a spring in their step and are excited to welcome students. And, you know, are, are getting those kids, I have a couple of kids in those grades, excited for it. So the fact that they're doing all, all of our staff is going above and beyond, but doing it with such joy and grace. I just wanted to commend them for that.
Thanks, Sarah. I'll definitely second that village one, you know, because I think they're obviously very busy with all of COVID pieces. And then, you know, on top of it, they still have all the students coming in. And, you know, at this point in the year, there's plenty of little bellyaches and anxiety pieces popping up. And so they're just, you know, I think they're doing a phenomenal job. Anybody else? All right, then that will bring us to Yassen for our student representative update. Welcome, Yassen. Thanks for joining us.
Yeah, thank you. The MHS Open House on 9/30 went well. And a big thank you to the National Honor Society for helping out as well. MHS also held SAT testing on October 2nd. Yesterday, all grades had class pictures and also a bus evacuation drill. Those went well. And we are also, the school is working to try and determine vaccine, vaccination rates and implement a COVID testing program. So hopefully, we will see what happens with that. And as far as clubs go, Grizzlies and Serendipity, the a cappella groups, they held auditions. Students were inducted into the Triumph Music Honor Society on October 5th. Team Harmony had its first meeting yesterday. They're a club committed to ending bias and, excuse me, discrimination at Marblehead High School. The National Green School Society is collecting clothes for a clothing swap until October 21st. And they also had an induction today. The service learning class is also collecting clothing for the Magic Hat Thrift Shop as well. The first math meet was today. And today, Best Buddies also had an event with the girls' soccer team. And for Student Council, the junior class plans to sell class clothing soon as well. For sports, girls volleyball held a raffle and a silent auction fundraiser. Girls soccer is eight, two and one after the win today over Winthrop. So congratulations to them. The boys cross country team beat Peabody to clinch the NEC North title. And the golf team beat Salem yesterday and qualified for the state tournament. So good luck to those teams. As for the senior class, their fall formal will be in the gym due to COVID restrictions. However, for their prom, they will be at the brand new Fenway Event Space. And they will be able to watch the baseball game at prom, which is pretty cool.
That is so cool. I can't remember where I first heard that recently, but it's so exciting for those kids. Because, you know, that's the class that has missed their semi, their sophomore semi, and then their junior prom. And it's really exciting that, that, that they're able to do something like that. So, thank you, Yassen. We always appreciate the update. There's lots of good things going on at the high school. And it makes me wonder, do students still hate the bus evacuation drill as much as we did when I was in high school?
I don't, I don't think anyone hates it. It's just, you know, it's a little silly to get down and slide off through the bus.
Did you? Megan said she liked it. I always hated it. Thank you, Yassen. We'll see you next time. Yeah, David?
Could I, could I, so, so Yassen, a year removed from, you know, thinking about where you were last October, how is it different this year?
Um, for me, it's, it's definitely weird. I'm, I'm a junior and I still haven't had a full year of high school. So that's, that's pretty weird. But I, I think I'm adjusting. It's definitely, the workload has definitely increased, I think, since we're now in person, full time. But I think everyone else is adapting as well, and it's getting better slowly. So that's good.
Good to hear. But managing all of the classroom exchanges and lunchtime breaks and all those different things that go on in the school, it seems to be manageable?
Yeah, the schedules, when they change, they're pretty clear. So we can usually always tell what our schedule is. So we haven't had a ton of those issues. It's been good.
Great. Well, hopefully, this year and next year will, will be, will be normal years for you, so.
Yeah, I hope so.
I think we're all hopeful of that. Thank you, Yassen.
Yeah, thank you so much.
All right, that leads us onto public comment. If anyone would like to make a public comment, use the raise hand feature and I will call on you. If you do, I would request that you keep it to three minutes. And remember to state your name and address for the record. I've got one hand up so far, Scott Solberg, go ahead.
Hi there, Scott Solberg, One Ramsey Road. I, you know, I know that, and thank you, Yassen, for your great comments. It's still not normal, right? I mean, we've gone through this major trauma as a, as a community, as a society, as a world. I think we're still trying to grapple with that. And I just wanted to give a shout out. We were talking about, really talking about the great things going on to Mr. Stephen Donahue, who is one of our heroes right now at the high school, really helping our child make the transition in. But I also want to just call our attention as parents that it's not easy for educators. And I think they're still needing, you know, at the end of the year, we give them support. And I know we would, we'd send presents out at the end of the year. I think we need to do it now. I think we need to start giving out the positives, just saying how hard, they're looking great. That high school open house was amazing and a lot of great faces forward. But they're struggling, it's emotionally challenging. So let's try it as parents, I just want to give a shout out to say, let's, let's try to do something to acknowledge just how great they're doing and it's hard and, and keep it going forward. So that's all I want to say. Thank you. I didn't use three minutes, so I hope that's okay.
Yeah, thanks, Scott. I really appreciate that comment. It's something, you know, that I know a few of us have brought up to John too. Like, how can we support our staff as much as possible through this as well? So thanks for your comments.
That was part of our conversation in the SAC meeting today as well. So yeah, thank you, Scott. All right, I don't have any other hands up, so I will move us along to our consent action and agenda items, which we have two sets of minutes this evening that were in our Dropbox. So can I get a motion to approve the minutes from 4:01, 2021, and 4:08, 2021?
So moved.
Megan moved.
Second.
Emily, second. Does anyone have any corrections, additions, anything, Sarah?
The first set needed some clarification. It said, missed, called order, like, we just need to fill, like, it looks like they were kind of in draft form and then not completed. So if we can just complete them. And then also that the headings are missing where it says, like, the date of the meeting, the Zoom information, who's present, like, all, all of that information. So if we can just tighten up that before, you know, they become final and take them.
Absolutely. Yep. And I know, I talked with Lisa at, like, 5:30 today. And I know she had been working on some of those smaller details within the meeting. So that, depending on when you looked at them, they may be already taken care of with that.
Okay. And then, um, under the meeting for 4:08, if there was, there was a bullet that says a conversation regarding enrollment numbers and staffing took place. If we can just kind of detail what that conversation was a little bit more. I think that was a really important conversation at a really important meeting. So I want to make sure that the minutes give, give a clear view of that for anybody looking back. And that's it.
Great. I wrote those down and Lisa's definitely on the call, so thank you. Okay, anything else? All right, I will roll call vote. Sarah Gold, yes. David Harris?
Being sure I'm not, yes.
Megan Taylor?
Yes.
Sarah Fox?
Yes.
And Emily Barron?
Yes.
All right, that was pass five to zero with the corrections noted. All right, John, that brings us to our superintendent report. We have, first up, our Planning for Success, a technology update from Stephen Quicheck. Stephen, welcome.
Thank you.
I will let you take it away. Need to share your screen at all? I know you had.
I think I sent some slides earlier.
Yeah, if you have them up, do you want to, do you want to share them?
Sure.
All right. You should be all set to do that.
So I'll just provide a little commentary while he's pulling that up. I'm hoping to have Planning for Success as a regular update on school committee agendas so that you're aware of the work that's being done on those action items for this year. And I decided to start with Stephen because he's been doing so much, as David noticed, noted, opening Brown School in addition to a lot of upgrades in technology and phone service. And I thought that you guys would find that insightful.
Thank you, Dr. Buck. So in Planning for Success for our technology, this year we're focusing in on two main goals. One is developing a comprehensive, long-term technology plan. And the second would be to create added technology supports for our staff and students using a technology integration specialist who we hired this year, Minnie. In getting ready for our technology plan, I'm going to be looking to create a district-wide technology committee. Committee is going to be focused with members from our technology department, principals, hopefully some teachers and community members as well. Looking to review our current technology, all of our computer labs, all of our devices, equipment, network infrastructure, software. And then start making up multi-year goals for replacement cycles, upgrade cycles, doing a review of new technologies that might be out there that we want to add into our classrooms. And our second one, working with our integration specialists, we want to create new opportunities with PD lessons, whether it's one-on-one with our integration specialist or kind of breakout sessions where they can maybe do a launching group meeting where they might want to learn something new about, whether it's Zoom or Google or any of our other software technologies that, that we're running. Or, you know, in our new school, we have all the new smart boards. It might be a great chance for all of those staff members to have a chance to learn more about all the technology in their classrooms as well. Also provide an online learning environment for our staff. So we're creating a new website for our staff that will house all of our software solutions, websites, and technology supports for our staff as well. So that's in progress and looking forward to making that go live pretty soon. And then as well, we have software package where our staff be able to schedule in integration specialists and work with them and co-tee. And for those. That's our focus besides other upgrades doing through the summer and through, through this last year, so.
Fantastic. Thanks, Stephen. Does anybody have any questions on that? Sarah?
So is there going to be a component that looks at same curriculum and how we can integrate that and improve that in our, our various grade levels? I know you had some really wonderful ideas. I got to work with you in our Planning for Success initial group there. And you had some wonderful ideas, like, really at the tip of your tongue, ready to go, that pertaining to that. So I would love for that to be a piece of it as well.
Yeah, so definitely a part of the committee will look at all aspects, not just hardware, software, but programmatically, you know, different things we want to focus on, add on. You know, one of our areas of need, I think, is in our elementals to really get more technology for those students, to prepare them so that when they do move up through the school, that we really have a full K to 12 program. And, you know, that's, that's something that's going to take a couple of years for us really to work on and build and, and to get to a point where we can focus and get us to where we need to be.
That's wonderful. And then that, that group is, it looks like a great group. I, can I put a plug into, put a, or actually a firm request to have a school committee member be part of that, where this really is a strategic plan, although we, none of us like to use that word. You know, this is what this is, it's a technology strategic plan. And so I think it's really important to have on any strategic plan, planning model, a school committee representative.
Obviously, anyone is welcome to join. But really, the, the focus for this technology committee is to focus in on our building, like our five-year tech plan, which will definitely have pieces of the Planning for Success as well, so.
Stephen, my question to kind of piggyback on that was, do you think that it would be valuable to have a student, a high school student on that? I know, this is the third year I sat on the high school SAC. And so I know, you know, I think we've made some huge improvements over there. But pre, pre when you were on board and really digging into this stuff, I know the, the Wi-Fi and everything was commonly discussed with the students that are in that meeting. So I'm just wondering if it would make sense to you to, to, to do that as well, to add that group?
I think a student representative would be wonderful to have on the committee as well.
Great. Any other questions for Stephen?
I don't have any questions. I just, you know, obviously, this is a big initiative for us. But I think the integration with really helping the staff get up to speed with the new technology, you know, I'm really happy to see that that's part of, you know, such a major part of what you're focusing on. So hopefully, you know, we can really make sure that they're comfortable with the tools that we're making available. Thank you.
And then part of this, you know, when you come up with this five-year plan, I'm hoping that you'll have funding drivers with that as well for each, each, each initiative that you are, or step of it, you know, any funding requirements?
Definitely. Part of the Planning for Success, besides these two focuses that we're really focusing on, especially this year, is that we're currently in the process of building a multi-year budget, which will cover, you know, future needs as well.
Perfect. Thank you, Stephen.
Thank you.
And if I could, so, and thought it might have been part of the agenda, but Dr. Bucky and Steve, I think we received an email about, about a grant that you applied for related to technology.
Yes, we received the ECF funding for about $346,000. So we're going to get a lot of new devices out of that, Chromebooks, iPads, and a lot of hotspots as well for students who really need it.
Well, I think you're being a little modest. A lot of Chromebooks and a lot of iPads, I think it's order of magnitude around 600. And I think we're talking about somewhere in order of magnitude around 300 MiFi's. And, you know, doing a little research on that grant, it was an FCC grant, I think, that was put out, you know, during COVID, a $7 billion grant to promote connectivity. And in my brief discussions with you the other day at the Brown School, you know, you were talking about how this will help last year when we were able to get new Chromebooks for teachers. But now we can update Chromebooks for students, iPads, and also have connectivity for students who might not have connectivity at home.
Yeah. So they, the MiFi's, it's up to 200 devices that we, we've been granted for currently. And you're correct, 600 Chromebooks, 300 iPads. So, yeah, really takes a huge burden off the district right now to be able to supply us with all these new devices for, for our students.
Understatement, a true testament. I mean, you know, you came here in January and you've just jumped in and full force. So that, that was, that's amazing. And it goes without saying, I mean, that will go a long way. I don't know what the, what the useful life is at that point. But as we know, technology continues to expand. So as soon as you have something new, there's an iPhone 13 that's out. But, you know, hopefully those Chromebooks and things that you're getting for the district, you know, that goes a long way. So, you know, thank you for, for the efforts that you're, that you've done there. And, you know, applying, applying for, you know, what's, what's out there for the district.
Thank you. I also just wanted to say, you know, all the work that I've done as well at the Brown School, my staff have been there, working their hearts out, you know, staying late at my, working to make sure not just the Brown School is ready, but all the rest of our buildings are, are as well ready and helping with the transition for staff members who've been, you know, displaced over the last couple of years to, to start moving into their new homes. So they've, they've really been working hard too.
Stephen, and before or around our next meeting, can you give us just a rough update on where we are with becoming one-to-one at the elementary level? I know a lot of our new math curriculum is device-based, and that's been a little bit of a hurdle. And so I was just wondering how close we are and what this new grant will do to get us kind of to that finish line.
I'll run the numbers again, but we're, we're very close, if not already there, so.
There certainly were a lot of carts at the new school today as we walked past them. It's great to see. Emily, did you have your hand raised?
Yeah, it's just something silly. But I did get an email from a teacher at the Brown School today that she did from her classroom. So that was, she was very excited. And another thing that Stephen did was our new website. I don't know if we've talked about it at our meetings yet. But my daughter did see it and was like, wow, that is really beautiful. So anyway, she said, come, so thanks again. That's another thing that we've done over this summer. And so thanks for all your hard work in getting us where we need to be.
Thank you.
Yeah, Stephen, you and your, your staff really have just, the pace at which you guys have worked over the past, you know, nine months is astounding. So you're, I'm, I'm quite sure that the things identified in Planning for Success will be able to be achieved as you, as you kind of check boxes. So thanks for presenting to us this evening.
Thank you.
I have, I have one other thing that I'll just throw out there. So, so Steve, in your spare time, maybe you can figure out how we can get Verizon connectivity at the high school and the Brown School. You know, so I'm in the parking lot of the Brown School the other day, and there, there's no cell service at the Brown School. And we've all known for years, there, there's no Verizon or very, very limited cell service at the high school. So maybe we can get Verizon in there to boost their signals and those, I mean.
We, we might, for safety's sake, invest in a internal amplifier because there, there's only maybe two or three actual spots in the Brown School where any cell service actually might work. But I, I'm already working and booking into that, so.
No, I, I'm sure you are. It's just remarkable, you think about, you know, seven years ago, you used to not have connectivity halfway home from work. And now you get it everywhere, you get to Marblehead and all of a sudden, in the parking lot of the Brown School and the high school, there's no connectivity. I don't know anywhere else in Marblehead, there's something about the buildings or whatever, but yeah. Throw that out there. Thanks.
We're working on it.
Yeah.
Thank you, Stephen. John, district updates?
Sure, I put in the shared drive, just seven things that I wanted to update the committee on. And I think it was Emily at our last meeting that asked for evaluation purposes, if I could do the references. So if you're looking at those things and wondering why it says 2A1, those are aligned to the superintendent evaluation rubric. So the first thing is the dashboard. We have made some enhancements to the dashboard. People were wanting to know more weekly information. And so we have added the two columns for weekly information. Every day, it's updated, so it's not just updated once a week. So Deanna goes in and anytime she learns of a positive case at a school, she marks that on the dashboard. And then all the COVID protocols and health attestation and all of that information is still there. Megan had a really great idea as people have been asking for information related to positive COVID cases of if there is a way to have an automated message that goes out to families. related to positive COVID cases of if there is a way to have an automated message that goes out to families when their child is out sick, reminding them of the protocols and uh, requesting that they get a PCR test if they have had COVID symptoms uh, before returning to school. So Stephen, again, gets a shout out that he says that uh, if we get him the language, he can automate that through Aspen. So if a student has been out sick, the family will get the automated message uh, that links them to the COVID protocols. And it requests that they get a PCR test prior to sending their student back to school. Um, the Brown School opening is the third thing. First, I want to echo what Sarah Fox said. Our teachers have been working so hard, and that is such an exceptional facility that in its greatness is also overwhelming because the light switch has five different options. And you have a smart board in the classroom and there are temperature gauges. And our teachers want to be perfect from day one. And I just want to say publicly, I am so grateful for all the hard work that they're doing, and it's okay if it's not perfect on day one. And you know, they're staying late at night. We're going to have the building open Saturday and Sunday. They're going to have the full professional development day uh, after Indigenous Peoples' Day to set up their classrooms and get some uh, organizational protocols in place so that they are feeling more comfortable. But I know the anxiety is high, and I just need them to hear from the superintendent that it's going to be okay. And we're so appreciative of all the hard work that they're putting in. So day one is October thirteenth. Um, on Sunday, that week, we will have the ribbon cutting ceremony, and we have a organizational meeting for that in the morning. And then the following week will be open house, and I think the Boo Through is uh, not Boo Through anymore. It's the Monster Mash this year. Um, so lots of great stuff uh, going on uh, at the Brown School. Megan?
What, what time is that ribbon cutting?
Is two to four.
Two to four. Okay, thank you.
Um, then you had requested that we re uh, revive, I guess is the word, the safety committee. So I have scheduled our initial safety committee meeting for October thirteenth at eleven thirty. And so far, uh, we have confirmed that Chief King, Chief Gilland, Robert White from the ambulance service, Brian Oda, Mandy Murphy, Michelle Carlson, Matt Fox, Sarah Fox is the school committee rep. And in that initial meeting, it will be uh, to be determined. Should there be other people on that guest list, on that committee uh, that aren't there and kind of mapping out uh, the year ahead. But I know in talking to the fire chief, he's very glad that this uh, committee is coming back online, as is Chief King uh, with Marblehead Police Department.
Actually, John, if I may, just because this is, this is the first time safety committee has met in several years. Can we change, uh, I hadn't seen this date until your memo came out yesterday. Um, and I, I am, I'm not available. Is there any way you can change it to the following week? And maybe we can talk about this offline, but whereas we haven't met in so long, I, I'd like to be there.
Absolutely. Let's talk offline on that. It's just coordinating all of those schedules is like herding cats. But um, if there's a way that we can bump that ahead a week, um, let's have that conversation.
Thank you, thank you.
Um, the wellness committee, likewise, I scheduled an initial meeting for that group. Sarah, I think you are the wellness committee rep. Um, and currently it's Deanna McMahon, Amy Amico, uh, assistant principal at Village, Lindsay Page, and assistant principal at the high school. There will be a board of health uh, representative. And again, to be determined, should our food service director be on that? Should the facilities director be on that? And then kind of mapping out priorities for the year. Um, ARPA funds, I continue uh, to work with Michelle and leadership at looking at some possibilities for the uh, six million dollars that the town of Marblehead is getting uh, in those funds. Um, Jason, I know the town administrator hears from me regularly on this, and they have a process in place where they're going to do some community outreach, either in the way of a survey or forums. Um, I reached out to my colleagues to ask what their communities are doing and how the schools are being looped in uh, that. And so Michelle and I are looking at prioritizing things and putting some dollar figures to that, and then providing those to Jason for moving forward.
Is that something maybe for the next meeting, we could walk through just to see what that priority list is?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
And then really good news, our director of human resources started this week, and uh, she is exceptional. Um, certainly coming into a very vague uh, job description. We're happy that we're partnering uh, with the town on this. But um, her background uh, in HR, I was sharing with some of you. I got an email this week from a staff member who had a leave question, and I responded that um, I'm copying Lisa and our new HR director, and she came down the hall and she said, do people really send the superintendent of schools, things like that? And I said, yes. And she's like, why? I said, because there wasn't a U. And so she is, uh, she's excited about the work and she's already added uh, some true value. So I want to welcome Cassie Bruner uh, to the Marblehead Public Schools as our director of HR. And that's the superintendent's update.
What are you going to do with all your free time, John?
Be out in the schools, David. I'm going to take that assistant principal's office at the Brown School as soon as I can move in.
Who knows? That, that is, that's really, that's, that's a great hire. And I think it's the first step. It's, as we talked about, it's shared with the town too, right? So that position will support the, that's great.
I did want to say in my weekly update, uh, tomorrow, I'm going to uh, uh, talk about, uh, we had uh, Dr. Carrington last year, uh, who came and did such a nice workshop for parents uh, during COVID and attending to the needs. And the Marblehead Counseling Center is going to start a series of workshops. And so we'll be promoting that, that it's going to be on October nineteenth at six thirty. Um, and so as, as been mentioned a couple of times tonight, um, what Jody Carrington said last year was, if the big people aren't okay, the little people won't be either. And so as we attend to our students' needs, we want to make sure we're attending to families and staff needs as well. And that'll be in the district update tomorrow.
Great, thanks, John. And I'll just highlight that, that the uh, presentation on the nineteenth is regard, is, is focused on families uh, and, and supporting families and children. So it's one that is quite relevant to our crowd. All right, any questions or follow-ups for John on any of these things?
Um, I had a question about the opening, but I'm, I don't know if it's better to, for, to go under David's um, update, but I just wanted to, I know common practice in this is to make sure we're inviting any of past school committees, members, um, both current and past to, to this. And I want to make sure we're doing that as well, because this is something that's, you know, been a multi-multi-year thing that, that, you know, many other people have been involved in, and, and we should make sure we're inviting everyone.
I'm making a note of that, Sarah. I did reach out to Bill McCalla to make sure that uh, he was included. But I will make sure that at our meeting tomorrow, we get a list of school committee members um, passed that should be extended this invitation.
All right, um.
I think, if I, if, you know, going through a, a ribbon cutting event at my day job, that, that is always the challenge, Sarah, for sure, to make sure people are not left out. But in addition, you know, I have a small thing I'll share here. Um, I'm sure that the, what gets finalized will be blasted out through, you know, the parents of over three thousand students in the district that um, hopefully if somebody doesn't get an individual um, invite, you know, that some way, shape, or form, they'll hear about it. But you're right for, from, for past school committee members that aren't on those email lists. We are endeavoring, I know, even with Cindy, the last couple of days to gather. I don't have this person's email address. So yeah, people are really trying to do their best to catch up with people's various email addresses. So if uh, you know, I'll just, I'll just throw it out there to people. If you, if you have emails to the committee or people that are on this, if you have various emails of people and, you know, you want to forward them to us, it's always helpful to make sure we have them.
Yeah, I think you're the only committee member that was on the original committee that saw um, the feasibility study getting passed and everything. It was you and Suzie Pratt, um, Meredith, Ted Bird, Jenna Schaffner, Kate Lipsits. You know, so I think that, that committee that embraced this and took this on, it would be really important to include.
And don't forget Kathy Leonardson. Kathy was actually the chair of the uh, feasibility study that got approved at town meeting when I first joined committee. So you're right, you know, you know, Kathy Leonardson. So you're right, there's a, there's a lot of people up there and we'll, we'll try and um, we want to get that, get that word out for sure.
Wonderful. All right, um, that brings us to the superintendent twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school year goals. Um, we got these at our last meeting and the, the, kind of the one comment was to maybe beef up a little bit of budget. John, do you want to? Um, I know you said that you did that. Do you want to just um, you know, kind of publicly say what you put in and, and where?
I did. Um, Sarah had asked that I make uh, reference to the budget, and I didn't create a separate budget goal. But under uh, my second uh, goal number two, I added language specific to the budget and making it needs-based and working with the budget subcommittee and the school committee to make sure that the FY twenty-three budget provides for the needs and supports to deliver an exemplary educational curriculum.
Great, thanks for doing that. Um, so um, I will ask for a motion to accept the superintendent's goals for tw- the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school year.
Still moved.
Megan moved.
Second.
David second. Right, any final comments before I call for a roll call?
Um, I wasn't here obviously for the conversation um, in the last meeting, but I followed up with John on my comment. So um, you know, I'm, I'm good for now. Thank you.
Great. All right, uh, Sarah Gold, yes? David Harris?
Yes.
Megan Taylor?
Yes.
Sarah Fox?
Um, yes, and just, I, I meant to grab you for discussion quick. Would you consider even not, if, although not changing the goal, entering the language to reflect that budget will be part of it in the write-up?
Uh, I'm, I don't understand, sorry.
So he has like a narrative under each goal. And so although he wouldn't have like a, a budget goal per se, he can put in the narrative, that additional piece about, about incorporating budget as a factor in those items.
It's, it's in there, isn't it?
It wasn't updated from the nine twenty-six.
I think she's talking in the four goal, or the three goals at the top.
Yes.
That she wants language regarding budget in the top section of the four goals. Certainly I can add budget to number two because it's listed as one of the action items.
Okay.
Thank you. It's just, it's such an, an important piece that I just would like to see it in, as part of that. Thank you, John.
Yep.
And Emily Barron?
Yes.
Okay, so that passes five to zero. Wonderful. All right, Michelle, that leads us to the finance part of our meeting. So tonight we have on a couple of things that you had discussed with the uh, budget subcommittee a couple of weeks ago. So you are here to first present us to, with the FY twenty-one closeout.
So the FY twenty-one closeout, um, actually, could I share the screen?
There you go.
Awesome, thank you. Can you see that? Okay, excellent. So the FY twenty-one, we originally presented this a couple of weeks ago. Um, we were in um, you know, preliminary figures at that point. It's pretty much firmed up. Um, we are in the days of our, um, final days of our audit right now for the town. So things are, things are looking at as they were a few weeks ago. Um, so basically for FY twenty-one, we had an operating budget of forty million, five hundred and twenty-one thousand. We spent a total of forty million, four hundred and sixty-one thousand, four hundred and twenty dollars. And at that time, we expected to turn back an amount of fifty-nine thousand, five hundred and eighty, and that's looking to be true at this point. Um, we were able to prepay some costs such as a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to special education tuitions. Um, basically that's an insurance policy and a prepayment of this year's expenses that we know we will incur. Um, in addition, we tried to restore some of the balances in the revolving funds, especially the circuit breaker fund, which is only used for special education costs. And ideally, we receive roughly between one point two and one point four million in circuit breaker funds each year. Um, to be responsible, we really should be holding on to about half of that each year. So we did have a reliance of, of spending all of those funds every single year. So at this point, we were able to bump up that revolving fund to, to a balance of two hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars to start this year. So while we're not where we want to be um, for an end game, but we certainly are making progress because we are higher than we were last year. In addition, we were able to um, basically not tap into any of the kindergarten preschool tuition account. We were able to keep that stable and absorb all those costs last year. Initially, we were, we were thinking of just absorbing the shortfall, um, because we did have a preschool tuition piece last year. But we were able to absorb all the costs from last year, which is able to, you know, build up that fund as well. And then lastly, our school lunch fund, we were also able to increase that a little bit. We did have some federal revenues. Um, so a lot of our costs, we put towards the general fund. In addition, we were able to order all of the, not all of the, most of the math curriculum costs. Um, we initially, we initially ordered all that in June, so that did come out of this FY twenty-one budget. And there were some small pieces to that math curriculum that did, did land in FY twenty-two because of, uh, which we needed some more um, textbooks and whatnot, not textbooks, but workbooks. And then um, we were also able to secure some additional IT equipment that we were not planning on. So between COVID last year and the COVID funding that we had last year, that we spent a lot of money on technology and the FY twenty-one available funds at the end of the year, we were really able to make some great headway in our, in our IT needs. Um, so the bottom of this page just shows you where our revolving fund balances um, are at this point. And so the total of our revolving funds, obviously they all have different um, purposes or restrictions on what we can spend them on. But basically, we're just over a million dollars in our total revolving funds. What's a good piece of that going towards special education and kindergarten? Um, are there any questions on this part of the presentation?
Megan? Okay, Sarah, go ahead.
Um, just noting how the, none of these are surprises considering what was going on for us last year, but the building rent revolving and the gate revolving, the athletic gate revolving are really our only ones that have, have decreased. You know, the building by about twenty-five percent, but the athletic gate went down significantly. Uh, obviously, we weren't, you know, having spectators come. Is that, are we going to be able to cover our expenses this year? Do we feel that we'll get enough um, in receipts from this year to cover what we need to this year? Or do you see that being an issue?
Yeah, no, I do expect we will receive what we want. Typically, we do not have much reliance on the athletic revolving. Um, that, that's, we use it in the year following. So at this point, we only have, you know, just over four thousand dollars in there. Um, so we would not plan on, on using that for any of our costs for this year or for, you know, maybe for next year if we had a substantial balance. But because it's so small, I wouldn't plan on using that for FY twenty-three.
And that, and then, sorry about that. Um, with the kindergarten revolving, where we're, one of our goals is to get rid of kindergarten tuition. What are, what is the state guidelines on, do we have to use that up this year on kindergarten? Do we have to use it up during a time period when we're taking tuition? Or can we carry that over and still use that to pay kindergarten fee, like salaries?
Yeah, no, absolutely. We can carry that over as long as we are using it for those associated costs. Um, we can use, you know, we could plan on, even if we further discussion coming up in a few minutes, we'll be possibly eliminating a full day kindergarten tuition fee. And if we do that, we could use this for the next three years or, you know, the next number of years we want to, but as long as we're spending that on kindergarten or preschool. So there's no particular time limit there.
Perfect. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Megan? Nope, you're muted.
Um, thanks, Michelle. I mean, I think there's a lot of good information here. I think, you know, being able to prepay special education of a hundred and fifty thousand and also start to build up that circuit breaker is a really important, um, you know, thing for us to be able to doing, just given, you know, the variability in the special education costs. So thank you for highlighting that. I think one of the things, and I asked this in the budget subcommittee meeting too, is what I'm trying to understand is what was our total remainder from fiscal year twenty-one? And so, you know, obviously I can add the fifty-nine and the hundred and fifty, but it sounds like there are other things too that, you know, we use some of our fiscal year twenty-one operating budget to support other things. So I would really like to see what that total number is at some point.
Yeah, no, definitely. I will be putting that together when we do our, our final, final closeout. I'll give you guys an update. Um, it will include the, the absolute or, or the final cost of the math curriculum as well as any IT needs. In addition to this prepayment, really, really it was those three, um, main expenditures that we were able to prepay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And when you do that, um, Michelle, can you just make note of, we just had, we had a gigantic influx of, um, one-time funding last year. And I just want to make note of where we use that funding for any reoccurring needs, i.e. salary that was okay to put under that funding, but we used it for, I just don't want us to have an unrealistic picture that, or anybody to have an unrealistic picture that there is a surplus of funding in our budget at the end of any given year. I mean, we had millions extra come in last year that really helped in a lot of ways. So I just, you know, maybe we didn't, maybe it's, it is that we just have a surplus budget. My sense is we don't.
We, yeah, we absolutely do not.
I know we don't. I know. You know, we don't, but I, this, this number story for, for someone who isn't digging into the numbers might look at it and say, oh, the schools have extra money. And I want to make sure we're telling a very clear story. The schools had extra money last year because they had an influx of several million dollars in grant money. That was one time.
We absolutely, we, we, we did have the influx of the grant money, but we also had a very, um, unique year in dealing with the pandemic. We had remote schooling for, um, a good portion of our, our time, which reduced some of our transportation costs. It reduced, um, a lot of our, our substitute costs, and that wasn't necessarily due to remote learning. That was due to inability to obtain, um, the staffing levels that we needed. And as, as we talk about, for example, we have had a vacant bus driver position for at least two years since I've been here. And we now have three bus driver positions vacant. Um, we had two part-time ones and a full-time one. So we continue to try to fill these positions and if we were meeting our needs, we would not have this surplus or additional available funds out there. So that's a very good point to make because if, if we were operating the way we planned and able to attract the staffing that we really need, then we would not have these available funds. And also the, the additional COVID funding with all the, the federal dollars and the Town Cares Act as well assisted us last year.
And, and the next piece of that, what you, you talked about the, the areas where we have that we need that we weren't able to fill. We're also going to have to develop a good narrative on that because I also worry then there's going to be this idea, well, you got, you, you say you need it, but you didn't have it. And we saved that money and we got through the year. I mean, we all know, you know, at this table that we have principals substituting math class and doing lunch to like, so we, we are getting through by gigantic team effort because we are a team effort community, um, but it's not sustainable.
No, absolutely not sustainable. And that's a good point. I mean, my, myself, I have been in a kindergarten classroom about four times this year so far. So, um, I am probably your, your highest paid kindergarten parent, not the best use of the curriculum dollars. But, um, yes, we, we absolutely, it's, we're making do without them. It, it's not ideal by any means. And it's not the most cost-effective manner in which we're, we're addressing our needs. So we, we really do need those positions, but absolutely.
And if Michelle winds up covering my son's kindergarten class, we, we risk losing Michelle. So.
We won't go there.
I'm sure it's the best part of her day.
I do, I do enjoy it because it's, it's a break and I actually get to see what's going on in the classroom. So it, it, it helps me actually get a better understanding of, of what I do, why I do, you know, why I do what I do here. So it's actually a very good thing. Um, but yes, on to.
Can I ask one quick question?
Absolutely.
Just to kind of, um, and correct me if I'm, if I'm remembering wrong. So the math curriculum, did, did we end up using the S R funds for that? I thought that that was how we had discussed it. So we were able to cover that in a different way than which we had sort of initially said at the budget season that we were going to. This was, this was through these, you know, these funds that, that didn't get extended on substitutes and, and that type of thing.
Correct. Actually, we were anticipating having to use the SR three funds for the math curriculum. So, and that's actually a great thing that we did not have to do that. So, um, because we have spent, you know, on to my next point, we have spent most of our COVID funding to date. And really SO3 is our last piece of that COVID funding that's available to us right now.
Thanks.
So yes, so on to the COVID funding. This is actually the report you have seen previously over the summer. Not much had changed between the end of June and when I presented this a few weeks ago to the finance subcommittee of the school committee. Um, basically at that time, we were looking at just under a million dollars that was unreserved and most of that being in the form of the SR three grants. Additionally, we have paid for some additional tents this fall. We did pay for the nurse that we added on to the staffing needs for this year to deal with, um, the situation we're dealing with. And just some lingering and lagging HVAC bills that, um, came along. So really our uncommitted portion right now of the COVID funding is the SR three grant. And that is in the amount of seven hundred and ninety-six thousand. So the survey that was sent out a little over a week ago, week and a half ago, we have three hundred and twenty-five responses to date, which was great. And the responses covered from students to parents, to administrators, to staffing, um, to even just some community members. So it was a great variety of all different, um, groups that came along. Some people did not like some of the categories, but those categories were actually determined by the federal government, not myself. So, um, I did get some comments, you know, we don't have any of those groups in town. I did not make up those groupings. So, um, but basically as a result, the first priority of what that group felt our SR funds should be spent on is learning supports. And learning supports or learning loss is a requirement of the grant, and we have to spend at least a hundred and sixty thousand dollars of this grant on learning supports and learning loss, addressing learning loss. So that's great. Um, the second priority was mental health, which was no surprise. Um, because certainly I think everyone sees it in their personal and professional lives these days, no matter what industry you're in. Third priority was information technology. However, we are still, um, addressing our information technology needs. And we have a great plan going. And as you heard from Stephen earlier today, we actually did get some additional funding through the federal government and their E-rate program, um, that he's spending on hotspots and other devices. Fourth priority was operations and maintenance, which we continue to operate under the same guidelines that we were operating at the close of last school year. And our fifth priority was emergency preparedness. So at this time, we are, the, the plan for the COVID SR three spending is as follows, and this is working with Nan and, um, Dr. Bucky and the feedback of a lot of principals and administrators. And learning supports obviously was the, the number one priority. And we're hoping to be able to fund the full day kindergarten costs for year one with this grant. That is considered part of our learning loss and equitable access for education to all groups. Because right now technically, in dealing with charging for full day kindergarten, we do have a number of families who do not take advantage of that. And whether that is due to financial reasons or other reasons, um, it's not equitable access to all for this, this level of education. So that was actually one of the very specific points in this grant is equitable access to all students. So we felt that this was very timely. I should also add that when you switch from a paid full day kindergarten program to a, a district supported, usually the first year is the toughest to, um, deal with for financial reasons because when the town receives chapter seventy funding, which is a huge, um, revenue stream for the town from the state, that all of the kindergarten children are considered half students, halftime students, regardless that they're paying and going full time. They're considered a half-day student for our chapter seventy formula. So our chapter seventy formula for next year is based off our enrollment of October first of this year. So they are considered still halftime students. Next year, if the students go to full day kindergarten for no fee based on this grant funding, they are then considered full day students. And our chapter seventy funding for FY24 will be based on those students going full day, being a full student. So therefore actually the chapter seventy funding will be increased for FY24. I do want to say that it's not a dollar for dollar. Certainly we're not going to get an additional four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars worth, but it will make a substantial increase in the chapter seventy, a noticeable increase. Um, so usually the first year is the toughest to swallow. And once you can build in those costs, um, it's pretty easy from there. So that is the biggest ticket item here. Followed by instructional services such as tutoring, after-school programs, um, for sixty-one thousand, elementary summer program for forty-six thousand, credit recovery program at the high school level, thirty thousand. Um, we are trying to explore options if there's something similar, not necessarily a credit recovery program, it's something similar for catch-up for, uh, the middle school level. And so the total learning support would be five hundred and sixty-two thousand, which is the good portion of this grant. Next section would be mental health.
Do you want to wait till the end for questions? Or I've got Megan and Sarah with hands up right now?
Sure.
Okay, Sarah, you had yours up first.
So where we talk about chapter seventy money in the lag, um, you know, in the following year, um, I just want to make sure that we have a really clear conversation with the town. We're all on the same page because this, the, the the agreement, the unwritten agreement has always been that if chapter seventy goes down, we don't take the loss, but if chapter seventy goes up, we don't take the gain either. Now where this would be because of something we're doing, um, I want to be very clear with the town that, that, that additional chapter seventy money that's coming in comes straight to the schools. Um, and, and I just, I just think it's a really, really important conversation to have where we, that has not been our past practice.
Agreed. Absolutely. Because the, the direct relation or the increase in that revenue will be a direct result of, of us absorbing that cost, whether through our grant or through our operating budget. So absolutely, that is a, that is a point of, um, discussion that we will need to have through this budgeting process.
Megan, David, I see that you've got your hand too.
So I'm going, I agree with Sarah on that piece, but the second, you know, just following on from that, you know, we've talked about this a number of times of paying for recurring costs with one-time fees. So we have to be one hundred percent sure that we can continue to cover that expense. You know, we can continue to provide full day kindergarten once this fund goes away. So it will have to come through our operating budget. So I just want to have a real clear picture that we're going to be able to do that. The other question I have is, you know, these numbers that we've got against each, each piece, how much of that is salary versus non-salary?
Um, of the full day kindergarten, about three hundred and twenty-five thousand is salary and a hundred thousand dollars is health insurance benefits. Which the health insurance benefits piece would then go to the town's budget because they absorb it for the operating costs, for the operating budget. But if it's a grant or revolving fund funded salary, then that fund must pick up the, um, the health insurance costs.
Okay. And that's the same question for the other pieces. So for example, the credit recovery, is that thirty thousand considered salary expense? Or, you know, I guess I'm just trying to understand exactly what tho, those dollars go towards.
Yeah, most, it, it could be either or. Um, really that hasn't been determined. The instructional services, I, I think I split that fifty-fifty part of it would be additional supports by salary. Some of it would be consultants. Um, elementary summer program would be our own staff, but really they're, they're not benefited because it's, it's a summer position. Credit recovery is typically just a service. It's not, um, anything that we provided. It's, it's an outside agency that provides these credits. So yes.
So the town hasn't been paying the benefits of our kindergarten teachers in Paris?
Not the ones that are funded through the revolving fund.
Okay. And then, um, I, I, you know, part of that discussion with the town is this is what we want to provide as a level of education to our students and we as a town need to pay for this. It's not, we are going to absorb it in our current operating budget and therefore cut something else. It's, this is what we're going to need to make up out of that four twenty-five deficit. This much of it is projected to be cherry seed sheets and the rest we need to come up with from the, 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 the town revenues because the, like, we, we can't cut. There's nowhere left to cut in our budget. Let, let's just be clear. Like, there's nowhere left to cut.
Agreed.
David?
Thank you, Michelle, for putting this together. But so for clarification, would, these are FY23 spending numbers, right?
Um, some of them, some of them would be immediate. For example, um, we could implement the credit recovery. I know that the, the high school's in discussions or has a limited credit recovery program, but that's something we could institute midway through the year. The instructional services, we could implement those at any time, but the summer program wouldn't be FY23.
Okay, but, but full year kindergarten, we're, or people are paying, that would be next year, the fourth covers. And then, so, so we're budgeting this year for twenty-three. And then twenty-four, we would need to consider this. And, and I will start by saying, I am a full-on proponent for full kindergarten being supported by the town. I one hundred percent support that. I think it's long over, long overdue. But I want to throw a little bit of caution to the wind, uh, Sarah Fox, that um, we need to be a little careful about just saying, well, if chapter seventy goes up, you know, we need to make sure the town knows that it, that's our money. I'll go back to two thousand and five, when I was a young member of the finance committee. And we had chapped, and Michelle, you probably remember from being on FinCom and in your previous positions, we had two cuts during the fiscal year of chapter seventy funds that was, I mean, nobody, nobody saw it coming. And it's, so if you want to say that it's, you have to think about it the other way too, um, for everybody on the call, that if we ever were to come to a situation where chapter seventy funds are cut, you know, who owns, who owns those cuts? And so I think we've come up with a cooperative process. And going back to two thousand and five and two thousand and six, there was this idea that, you know, as a town, when the cuts came down, we owned them. We owned them together. We didn't just say, oh, oh, chapter seventy cuts, you know, you got to slash the school budget. And we worked together as a town to work through the cuts. And then you also have the opportunity, you know, when chapter seventy funds increase. But I also agree that I think this will be, um, will be, be able to probably define, and Michelle will know better, um, what that chapter seventy increase is that could be accountable to kindergarten and how we could make sure that the, that the schools, um, get that revenue recognized. But we want to be careful because it can go the other way. Get that revenue recognized, but we want to be careful because it can go the other way. And so if we want to say that, well, we should get every dollar of every new income. If it ever goes the other way, we have to be ready to be prepared to say that.
I understand that. I was very, very clear that this is pertaining to full day kindergarten and extra revenue that can be. Straight lined.
But chapter seventy doesn't say that. Chapter seventy is one dollar number, dollar figure.
I understand that, but simple math can, can deduce number of students rate for the year, ten point five percent. I mean.
Town budgeting is never simple. So I just, I just want to be clear, I'm in support of full day kindergarten. But you can't make a blanket statement that chapter seventy all goes to the schools. That's just not how we do it in this town. And um, we need to work cooperatively.
I made the statement that we have an agreement that the increase in chapter seventy funding from our half day students becoming full day students. Which is a simple math calculation, as Michelle can concur.
Well, in FY, all I'm saying, Sarah, is in FY twenty four, who knows, chapter seventy funds could get reduced. And then there could be an increase in chapter seventy funds. So if we have reduced chapter seventy and increase because full day kindergarten. It's, it's not as simple as just doing the math. It's not simple math, that's all I'm saying. And I recognize and I support full day kindergarten. And I think this is an excellent opportunity with the S R funds to make this transition to allow. Parents and students to come to full day kindergarten and for us to fund it. And I'll, I'll be there every step of the way. But I don't want to paint a simple picture. It, it's a complex. Uh, web that I know Michelle understands and will help us through as, as we go through this process and I support it. That's all I want to say.
And I think it's always good when we have a heads up on stuff like this with the, when we're, when we are using the one time funds to. To, to do this longer term stuff that, you know, that it helps us know where we need to have our heads focused. And then it also, you know, the public meeting, you know, we're, we're talking about this and, and it, it, you know, it'll be known to the town as well. Um, and so as we continually work forward and, you know, budget some committees in the future, that, you know, that this is, this is out there.
And I'll, and I'll even go, I'll even take it one step further for purposes of discussion, but not to, uh, carry this on. So in Florida, where my sister lives and she has two grandchildren. Florida, I, is one of a few states that supports pre K. And they have a pre K formula where pre K, from what I understand, is not necessarily. Provided by the local districts, but there's actually a um, an amount of tuition allotment. That goes to parents that send their children to pre K. Pre K is provided through approved private. Centers and not necessarily through the local schools. And so, you know, I'll throw out a number. Let's say it's um, you know, twenty five hundred dollars or two thousand dollars, and if it costs you three thousand dollars. But there's actually a tuition credit that goes to pre K for parents in Florida that send their kids to uh, pre K. And I, I think that's another direction that we need. I mean, this is the first step and. But I think now that we have, you know, we have pre K at the new school, we have pre K at Glover, we have a transitional K. And, you know, I'd like to think that we could provide some support um, down the road for, for pre K as well. And not have it be shouldered, you know, by the, by the parents. It's, it's part of the entire educational process. But um, that's for a whole nother discussion and I'm on board and uh, you know, just. Open discussions, but you know, you're right, Sarah, we need to support this. I support it. And um. As we move towards twenty four and developing our budgets and knowing that these are one time funds, you know, I'm on board with it.
All right, Michelle, go ahead. Thanks.
And I do just want to, not, not that I want to expand that or extend that conversation rather, um, I do want to mention, I believe we are only one of twelve. Communities um, that charge for kindergarten at this point, for full day kindergarten. So we are definitely in the minority and it's long overdue. So this is a great opportunity. Um, onto mental health supports. So the SR three grants, um, planning on spending about a hundred and five thousand, or earmarking that for mental health supports. Part of this could be um, same thing, could be part salary, could be part contractual services. Um, I did built in a small piece for um, retirement and benefits into there. Um, professional development direct to teachers for twelve thousand dollars for equitable access. Because that seems to be one of the key terms in this grant. Um, so we definitely want to make sure we are up to speed on that. Emergency preparedness for health services, um, sixty seven thousand, that would um, provide. Really anything we, we might need, could be testing, could be salaries, could be anything we need. This grant does run through twenty twenty four, so this is not something necessarily that we have to use this year or even next year. Um, but I do want to put that aside in case we do have the need. And then lastly, it's just the retirement and payroll taxes. I did build in the health insurance costs into the specific categories such as kindergarten. Where they picked up most of the health insurance cost, but retirement and payroll taxes are fifty thousand dollars across the board for all of these functions.
Is there money left, which is always a laughable question, um, Leaden? But is there money left if we choose to increase our nursing staff? I really. Personally think we should increase our per, nursing staff, given, you know, what's going on right now. And the amount of contact tracing and testing and everything that, that needs to get done, I think is a little greater than we thought it was going to be. At least for these first few months, since we have everybody um, vaccinated, hopefully that will decrease. But I, I'm wondering, at least in the part term, uh, uh, part time, you know, immediacy, if we need to hire. An, an additional nurse.
Um, if, if we have that need, we can certainly use this funds or a little bit of other COVID funds that we have left, not a lot. Um, we really don't have it within the operating budget, but certainly we could make it work. And this, this grant should become available within a number of weeks. So um, we can certainly make that happen.
And that's our, ARPA valid too, right?
Absolutely. Yeah, that's another, that's another whole discussion, but yes, there's another whole ARPA process going on right now.
Michelle, the, the funds under the mental health section for the professional development. Is that for professional development based on for targeting, supporting students? Uh, like, or supporting our staff to support our students?
Yes, um, ideally, um, when Nan and I discussed, it would be to um, provide the training to staff so they can better support our students. Absolutely.
Great. That was part of a conversation that we had at the SAC meeting at the high school this afternoon too, of just sort of, you know, what is being seen in the buildings. Um, you know, behavioral situations that are, are going on and, and kind of, you know. What the teachers are, are dealing with, yeah, you know, in, in reality in the classrooms and, and, you know. They're really being tasked with, with figuring out things that, that, you know, people like myself have master's degrees in. Um, and so, you know, they're, they're really, they're really in the weeds. And so I think the more we can do to support them, um, you know, that they're going to be able to support our students better. So I'm glad to see that, that those funds are earmarked for that. Um, I think it's really important and I'll just put out that I would love to see. Um, that, that professional development target a lot of, of, of um, trauma. Uh, trauma and, trauma informed care and, and trauma informed teaching, um, because I think that's really a lot of where our students are at. And um, and, and trying to support them and their families through, through everything that's gone on.
Absolutely. And I do want to mention, and in addition to this, um, this year, we typically have two special ed grants. The IDEA grant and our early childhood grants. Um, both of those grants actually had additional grants under the American Recovery Program. Um, so the early childhood had an additional grant of twelve thousand dollars. And the IDEA grant had an additional grant of American Recovery for a hundred and forty four thousand. So Paula is actually working on um, coming up with a plan of how to best spend those. And I know a lot of those, those supports will also be built into those grants.
Wonderful. David?
Yeah, and. I, I think we're sort of getting almost into a budget. I mean, granted, these are um, S R funds and one time money funds. And we might be getting into a, a budget discussion of. You know, twenty three and twenty four, but. You know, let, let's talk about guidance counseling. You know, my, my wife is a professional guidance counselor. And so I'm hearing about all the impacts at, at her school that's happening. And the challenges that are being faced by students. And um, so I'll raise my hand and say, you know, what am I? It's not that me, I think I need to hear from Dr.
Did everyone lose David?
Yeah, that's, I was just about to ask.
Build our budgets every year. We need to hear from Dr. Bucky. We need to hear from um. Dan Bauer, we need to hear from administrators and teachers back. Am I back? See me? I can hear everybody else.
Yep, you're back.
Can anybody?
It's choppy and frozen.
Can you, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Hear me now?
So like we're a Verizon commercial.
Yeah, you're right. Can you hear me now? Um, right. But I mean, I, I think there's. You know, there, there's a, there's a guidance need up, but I, a guidance need, but I'm, I'm not the one to determine that. And I think what we've all done as previous school committees and the way we've built our budgets, the superintendent has come forward. Through the administrative staff and told us, you know, we need counseling, we need paras, we need.
We lost you again, David.
David, we're lagging again.
There's, we need guidance counselors. So I mean, if we want to get into what we think, but you know. I, you know, I, I look at, I look at Mr. Gothier and what's going on. Sorry, I don't know what's happening. I don't know if I'm back.
You're kind of back. Kind of.
Anybody hear me?
I don't think you can hear. Okay.
I'll stop for now. I'll see if I can reboot. I'm going to lock off and try and uh.
So.
Okay.
Where we're talking about that money um, in the learning recovery, um, I think that. I definitely want free, free kindergarten tuition. I think we're way, way late to the game. I've been preaching that for a long time. Um, so I don't want to do anything to jeopardize that, but at the same time, I want to make sure that, that learning recovery money is addressing. The learning recovery of the bulk of our students. Um, so I wonder if putting some of it into like. Uh, tier one supports, um, and things like that would be, or, or expanding our, our. Our availability to do those extra supports, whether it's, you know, through tutors and things like that. Um, might help a bulk of students um, versus a smaller population. I, I don't think, you know, I'm not saying the kindergarten thing is definitely important, we definitely have to do it. But I want to also make sure we're addressing the needs of all of our students, um, because there, there is learning loss for everybody. I think we all know that. Um, and then just Dave, David's question about where we're jumping ahead and talking about um, budgeting a little bit, which, you know, we are. Um, but I, I for one would like to, I know when we go put those asks out to all of our administrators, our building level, our central admin. Of what their ask is for next year, and then that kind of gets filed through water or boiled down. Um, I would like to for one, see that initial ask, just so we have a concept of what our, you know, our building. And our central admin people are saying they want, they need before we kind of start carrying that down. Um, I would like to see that initial ask straight from them so that we can better advocate moving forward for them.
So, sorry, you, you did get that last year through the workshops. Anything that the uh, building principals or directors brought forward? They presented in their workshops?
All right, great, thank you. Uh, Michelle, any, any, anything that you got through that, correct?
Yes, yep.
All right.
All I have, and I think the next thing is the schedules.
Yep, all right.
Thank you.
So, no, thank you. That was, that was really great information and I know that's a lot. Um, so we appreciate those updates. Um, let's see, let me find the schedules and I will ask for a motion since I forgot to print this one. Um, can I get a motion to approve the identified schedule of the bill totaling one hundred ninety seven thousand, eight hundred and six dollars and ninety four cents?
So moved.
Megan moved.
Second.
Emily second. Any questions? All right, uh, Sarah Gold, yes, Sarah Fox.
Obscene.
Megan Taylor.
Yes.
Uh, sorry, my screens keep jumping around. Emily Barron.
Yes.
And David Harris.
Yes.
All right, so that is four to zero to one.
Yay, you can hear me.
Yes, we can hear you again.
Maybe that's not a good thing, but.
All right, that moves us on to school committee communication and discussion items. Um, we have first up, Sarah, you had asked for COVID mitigation protocols. To be discussed a little bit tonight. Um, we do have Joseph Griffin and Deanna McMahon with us to answer any questions that anyone might have. Um, I think, you know, I, I'll, I'll kick it off and then I'll kick it to you, Sarah. Um, you know, I think the, the test and stay slash full testing program uh, that, that the district is embarking on. Is, you know, is, is moving along. John, I asked John um, to give us a little bit of numbers on that. So John, do you want to do that at this point?
Sure, and I'm taking credit for Joseph Griffin's work because he's the one that compiled all of this uh, information. But we have roughly about fifty percent of eligible students participating in test and stay uh, across the district. And I have that by building, by grade level compared to the total number of students enrolled, the number of families uh, that have signed up for this testing. But in the aggregate right now, it's about fifty percent. And if people have specific questions, I'm sure Joseph Indiana can answer those.
Thank you, Sarah.
Um, and I'm fine getting some of this information offline if y'all don't want to go down this rabbit hole. But I'm wondering, is there a pattern where the fifty percent is an aggregate of the classes that we may be seeing more peaks in? Are they less enrolled or more enrolled? Like, are we seeing any type of pattern that is discernible? Or is there any pattern that, you know, maybe we've heavy enrollment at vets and lower at. Coffin, and I'm literally just making this up. I, I don't know where we have enrollment, um, that we then know to focus our push. In marketing, if you will, of the program in one place.
I guess my highest interest level, uh, you know, to, to kind of go off that, Sarah, is in, in our unvaccinated. Uh, or, or kids who are not able to be vaccinated. So Village uh, Coffin and, and Village Glover and, and then the Brown. Um, do we have those? Are, are those looking? Yep.
I did share with you in your email, the document that I shared with Dr. Bucky that's got the numbers for each school, uh, if you want to share it on your screen.
All right, let me see if I can find that.
I think this is one area, just while Sarah brings that up, that, you know, we definitely have to be creative in how we make this as easy as possible for parents. So they don't have to go looking for it, um, because this is one of our major safety mitigation, you know, protocols that we, you know, we really does help. Keep everybody in school, keep our schools open um, for a number of reasons. So anything we can do to make that as easy as possible for parents to, to sign up. So they don't have, like I said, so they don't have to go looking for it. Um, this came up in the Village SAC as well, and there were some good ideas that we batted around there, which we can talk about offline too.
I did ask that people that speak with their school nurse or Deanna or Joseph feel much better about the program. I think there's, continues to be misinformation that it seems that parents are worried that it is a very invasive process. And so I've asked Joseph Indiana to maybe create a screencastify or a little promotional video. To just demonstrate what it is and that it is not an invasive process. Cause I think people have some uh, images of COVID testing in the initial days where it was like tickling your brain. And they don't want their children to go through that, nor would they. But it isn't an invasive process. And so maybe a little promotional video to push out in addition to making it easier with either the QR code. Or a backpack message that I continue to ask our leaders to push out.
I also think we need to do some teaching because I think that a lot of it is um, confusion. I'm not on Facebook, but I do hear about things that are on Facebook and the people that are out making comments have no idea what they're talking about. And that's because they haven't been educated on the topic. So Joe and I are also going to make a video that talks about the topic. And then we just need to be able to get that out to people because I've had probably twenty, twenty five phone calls. And after I've spoken to everyone on the phone call to describe what the different tiers are and what they offer. And after I've spoken to everyone on the phone call to describe what the different tiers are and what they offer, they've been very pleased that they now understand it because they're asking the source and the source, you know, is myself or any of the nurses in the system. And that's what people need to do. They need to ask us and we need to educate them instead of having people just talk about it without having any information. That's correct.
Yeah. And I can speak, you know, my, I got a call from the village nurses a couple of times late last week and, and early this week. And, and, you know, my son was, was given the binax. And at one point when he was in there, the, the pool testing happened and, and he shot right up and immediately his ailments were fine. And got his pool test and, you know, and thankfully everything's been negative. But, you know, you know, the discussions that I've had with the nurses and, you know, they, they truly are sort of the boots on the ground. They're, they're, they're using their clinical skills. You know, this isn't, you know, where it just kind of wrote as the guidance can feel very like this and this and this, you know, this, it's just not how it's happening in reality. And so, you know, I was, I was told last Friday, you know, if, if he developed any further symptoms, you know, I would need to have a PCR test in order to have him return to school on Monday. And so, you know, these, these conversations are absolutely happening and, and the nurses, you know, are, are using or are being, are being our nurses and, and, and doing their jobs with fidelity. And so, you know, it was, I think I was standing in John's office at one point, having this kind of conversation with him about protocols and, and what's going on and, and the, and the things that we've been discussing. And I got a call from the nurse and I hung up and I was like, okay, my questions are answered because I just had a conversation with the nurse. So, you know, I think, I think these things are, are, you know, complicated, but, but going well, you know, probably stressful, but going well. Yeah, Sarah.
Um, I personally, from what I'm hearing in the community, it's not the swab depth or any of that. It's two things. It's people don't want to know. They, they just, they, they feel they're being safe and I hear no evil, speak no evil. And mainly, they don't want to be part of a pool. They don't, they don't want their child to miss school. Like this is the main thing is they, they're, there's concern of missing school, which the irony is, and I think this is what's going to sell this program. Is people need to understand, if you want to be part of test to stay, you sign up for this. It is that simple. You want to test to stay, this is your way in. This is your only way in. And I think at the end of the day, that's going to get us more than any, you know, a video or anything else, as well meaning as that may be. Like that, that's going to get us people. And I, I think too, what we can do, we do have, we do have the option of testing kids that come in with symptoms. I mean, it is to the discretion of our clinicians. Maybe we lower our threshold for that. If we don't have the buy-in we need for, oh, we can't do symptomatic testing unless they're signed up for tests to stay. And, and, yep. So we, we still lower our threshold. So, you know, if we don't have enough buy-in and we can't say we have enough certainty that we have a safe, you know, population, I hesitate to use that phrase, but then we say, if you, we are going to test you if we're sent, if we need to call you to come get your child, we are going to test you. Or if you don't want us to do that, understandable to you as a parent, you need to test to come back or quarantine, period. Like, if you have symptoms, these are your options. And I think if we start doing that, we'll get people to keep kids to kids home. And we'll get kids, people to sign up to test at school and test to stay because people don't want to get in the car and drive to the testing center. Although I'm like the poster person for how easy that is. Like I do it at least twice a week with all six kids and it's quick as can be. It's super easy, folks. Like it's not a big deal.
But what you just said, Sarah, is what we're already doing. When the child comes to the nurse's office and they have symptomatics in school, symptomat, symptoms in school and they are not consented to test and stay, we are dismissing them and telling them they need a PCR or an alternative diagnosis before they come back. Those are the protocols. We're already doing that.
But Sarah Gold just said she got a call and was told if your symptoms worsen or persist not, you need a note to come back.
Because he didn't have enough symptoms at that point to, to actually necessitate, like, you know, on that D E C sheet, it's got the bold. If you've got one of the bold or two or more, right, right. And he did not have two, he did not have one of the bold and he did not have two of the other.
It's also based on story. Like if I have a student that comes into my office with one symptom, but I know that they have a positive family member at home, then I will test them even though they have one symptom because that story for me is a symptom. So we, we, we are following the protocol, which is basically.
We've done over two hundred of the binex symptomatic tests in the last month of the schools as well. So the nurses are testing kids that are coming in with symptoms.
And I think, oh, go ahead, Mike. No.
Well, I just want to highlight the fact that I think we all have the best interests of our, of our students and our children, right? So the nurses and the nursing staff are doing a great job. And, you know, a, a very high, you know, additional responsibility at this point because of COVID. They're doing a great job. They're doing exactly what they're meant to do and actually a little bit above and beyond. Well, not a little bit, definitely above, above and beyond that. But on the flip side, as parents, we have to kind of do our responsibility too. And if our child has symptoms, whether it's hard or not, we've got to test them. And we've got to follow, like if they've got symptoms or if they have a fever, then we've, you know, we've got to follow those protocols as well. It's a team effort. And we've all just, you know, we've all got a responsibility to that.
Yeah. And I think this idea of I know my child, I know it's just this or it's just that. I think people need to be aware that unless you are testing them, you don't know. It's, it's as simple as that. If you don't have a test, like this is not mother's intuition. This is you test your child. I mean, Deanna, as far as I know, you're not taking notes of mother's intuition, right? We test the kids, period. Like not to be flip about this, but that's what we do. And I think that the nurses are doing everything in their capability. My, my question is, do they need more help? Like, like, do you need more staff? We didn't at the, when we were staffing you guys, we didn't anticipate, you know, kind of this, the delta bit, no one anticipated the Delta variant. And we, we're dealing with that now. We're dealing with more cases with younger kids. I mean, we weren't seeing these cases a year ago when we were looking at staffing models at all. You know, you guys need to tell us if you need more. The money is there. It's there in S R, it's there in ARPA. If you need more, but so that we don't have staff there till seven, eight o'clock at night, like you need to speak up. We, we need to, and we need to provide it. We need to advocate for them.
So John and I talked about that the other day, and so it will be a discussion because I'm not going to say that we couldn't use help. We could use help.
Part of the issue is that C I C promised these extra staff and they are not able to provide it. And so you're normally having three or four people doing the job that, thankfully I have Mary Ann, like a village who stepped up and is helping me get the kids down to pool test them. And Elizabeth at Glover is closing the office except for emergencies to help us get these kids tested. But it's not sustainable because they're going to have emergencies to deal with. Mary Ann can't take all that time out of her day to help me every time we're testing. And you just can't get through it by yourself. Now, the kids at Village are becoming very adept at doing it. So we're getting through them really fast. But when we start to get into the high school and the middle school, it, it's, it's quite a bit more time consuming for only for one person. It's almost impossible.
And quite honestly, like it, and we don't need an RN to do the, the pool testing. We could hire you, someone who's not an RN to do that. And that would take a tremendous amount probably off of some of your staff. So we just need to, we need to do whatever you guys need to do to be able to function at your maximum, you know, capacity or whatever.
And the other issue is, is that if I get pulled for another school for field trips or, you know, a nurse is out, then the testing has to stop if the nurse is required at Glover or required at the high school or wherever, I just won't be able to go test.
That's why it would be useful if we could at least get an LPN because an LPN could work in a building with another B S N and I can shift people around. We're all capable of working at each of the buildings, so I can shift things. Because I don't want to see this testing program be stunted because we have not enough nurses to cover position.
In the last two weeks, we've pooled tested over six hundred kids and we've, we've only had three positives in all of those, three positive pools and all those tests that we've done.
Just a question, and I don't, you know, again, we can kind of follow up offline, but just in rewatching some of those D E C webinars on the testing protocol, because you know, what else am I going to do late at night? In, you know, this has come up, the shortage of C I C staffing and support. And one of the things that was mentioned there was that if we, you know, if we do take on additional staff to kind of fill that shortage, they can actually subcontract through, I don't know if it's C I C or D E C, I think it's through C I C to help cover that cost. Right? So it might just be something worth following up on.
In the webinar, they said that you could apply for additional FEMA funds.
Yes, that as well. Yep. That's probably, the reimbursement process is probably a little bit slower there, but yes, yep, another option for sure.
So at, since, since nursing staff is a school committee hire, I would say that we give whatever approvals, Michelle can let us know what we need to give. We give whatever approvals we need for that additional position to be posted. And we, we get this ball rolling because, you know, anybody who's watching the dashboard, probably not too many people as psychotically as I do. You know, fair enough. But it, those numbers are climbing at an alarming level. And it's not because our nursing staff is playing Jenga. It's, you know, they're working hard, but we can, we can help them.
Emily, you've had your hand up.
That's okay. My comment goes back a little bit because I didn't get called up. I'm just kidding. So I called D E C today to clarify a lot of the confusion that's been happening. And I'd like, I just want to say that I talked to someone in the commissioner's office and she clarified that what we are doing is exactly right according to the protocols. So I just wanted to clarify that with everybody. And her, her big thing that she actually like wanted me to quote was that we have this testing, the protocols, the in-school, the way that we're treating this in school to keep everybody safe. But it doesn't count for out of school and they are counting on people doing the best they can to keep people safe. So that was her big push that we need to, when we're not, we know school's safe and we're doing everything we can to keep us in school. But outside of school, everyone needs to step up and do the right thing, which is if your kid is sick, call the nurse, get a test. And that's so important so that we can keep our kids in school every day. So I just wanted to reiterate that, that how important outside behavior is for everybody. And we all need to step it up, I think.
So I, I talked to D E C today too. I talked to the senior advisor to the commissioner in regards to COVID and COVID mitigation. And she was the one that said, you know, it's, it's really the clinical judgment and they can choose if they want to, if, if there's an outbreak if you can, you want to increase your standards or whatever. But what's troubling to me is right away she goes, I didn't even need to tell her about what was going on in some of our schools and she used the phrase, are you talking about the village situation? It is troubling to me that there is a big enough situation that D E C immediately knew the name of the school and referred to it without me even saying that. So that, that is troubling and we need to do what we need to do. And I think giving Deanna the additional staffing to do with whatever she sees fit is, is what we need to do.
Just to let you know, the reason why that was known was because when something was happening like that, I had to collaborate with the Board of Health and we had to collaborate with D E C on the situation. So that's why they were able to say that to you because that was discussed yesterday. So it was fresh.
She also said we could request the mobile testing unit that was available last year. If we could, if they would, if they would send that out to Marblehead or not. And then the state pays for that versus like the town and ARPA funds paying for that testing.
Correct. But in the, when collaborating with the Board of Health, they didn't feel like it was necessary because they speak to other school systems nearby that have utilized some of the things. And because we were already doing the ninety pool tests at the building, if we were already covering it.
David, go ahead.
Can we just take a timeout? I mean, we have Deanna who's a professional here. We have Joseph who's a professional. And we have Dr. Bucky who's the superintendent. At my day job, they can't even keep up with the testing. They can't even keep up with what's called close constant contact. We're trying to figure out when employees can come back to work, when they've tested negative. I mean, this is an extremely challenging process. And as a school committee member, I'm not going to make recommendations that we need to have mobile units here. I'm not going to be making recommendations. I'm not going to be calling D E C. I think I am going to rely on Deanna, Joseph, recommendations of the professional staff that we have and Dr. Bucky to make decisions about what's best for this district. Can we please do that? And Dr. Bucky will speak, I guess, at some point. If there's a recommendation here that we need additional staffing, I'm sure this committee will, will deliberate on it and make a decision. But I am not the professional when it comes to COVID testing and how and when and where we need to do all this. This is really, I think we're getting off track. And I have full trust in the professionals that have been managing this, just like I do at my day job. And it's quite honestly, it's overwhelming. But I also want to go back to a comment that was made, something about it's alarming and everything else. It's depends on your opinion. New York Times said the variant is down by over a third. And it's starting to go the other way. At where at my place of work, they are now testing instead of three times a week, two times a week. And there were two positive cases out of seven thousand seven hundred and sixty-four students. So it depends on which picture you're looking at. But I don't think we should be getting into a debate here as a committee about what we think. I want to hear from the professionals. And so far, what I'm hearing is we might be understaffed, we might need some additional help here to accomplish what we want to, what is in the best interest of the district. But I certainly don't want to micromanage what Deanna, Joseph and the staff and Dr. Bucky are doing. And I, I just want to support what, I mean, they're in this full-time to win it. And I want to hear, you know, whatever the needs are, we can, we can deliberate those and try and come up with something to support that.
Yeah. And I don't believe that we need any kind of motion or anything to be able to post for a nursing position. I think the only piece that the school committee plays in that is, is approving the hire. So if that's, you know.
And the, in the budget, I, I adding it to the budget. But this, this all, we're talking about policy here and as you know, that is one of our main jobs. So we do need to do our job. And I am listening to the professionals. It's not as if Deanna said, I don't need your staff. And I said, aha, Deanna, you're wrong. You do. Like Deanna told us she needs more staff. We can choose to say she, believe she said it, or we can say she didn't say it, but she needs more staff. She's shaking her head, yes. This is not, I mean, we're not debating facts here. The fact is, Deanna needs, is telling us she needs more staff. We're going to listen to her or we're going to disregard her professional opinion.
No, no, but, but additionally, Sarah, you're adding commentary about your thoughts about COVID and it's, it's exceedingly dram, dramatic and that people knew about the village school and that there's some explosion.
Even maybe you're not aware.
I think we need to, I think we need to kind of reel it in here a little bit, Sarah. We need to.
Unless you have a mouth in your pocket, I would, you not use the word we.
A mouth in my pocket?
It's a phrase my mother used to yell, say when you say.
All right. So I think we're, I think we're getting a little bit off topic. And I think we, I think we are all in agreement that, that we could, you know, that, that Dr. Bucky is going to work with Deanna and Joseph offline to determine what the needs are and how we can best support them. And if there are budgetary implications, you know, we will absolutely deal with that. And that, you know, that they, I think it's evident by the support of everyone on this call that if an additional nurse or two or however many is determined to be needed, that, that we will work to, to, to support that. That, 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 that is a top priority. So.
The other piece I wanted to, to include in part of this, I, I'd said in my email was, I would like us to adopt a policy of classroom level notifications for COVID the way we do for, the way we have done in the past for flu strap and things of the like. We, legal has consulted and has said we absolutely have the legal ability to do this. It's up, if we choose not to do it, it's a district decision. It's not bounded in any legal reason. So I would like us, I, I guess I'm. So I would like us, I, I guess I'm, I'd make a motion to adopt a policy to make classroom level notifications um, of COVID cases in your child's class.
Can I just comment on that?
Yes.
So, hold on, we have a, we have a motion on the floor. So let me just, if there's a second on that um, before, before I have you comment, Deanna.
Um, before I second it, I just, you know, and I said this in our retreat. This isn't the type of thing that I think we should be making decisions on, on the fly. So I would like us to follow some process here, as we talked about in our retreat. And if this is something, Sarah, that you want the policy subcommittee to look into, then I think we should follow that process. So I'm not willing to vote on that right now because we haven't even discussed it, and I'm not interested. I don't think it's in our, the district's best interest to make decisions like this on the fly. I think we should send it to the policy committee, let them come to us with a recommendation after they've spoken to our nurse and our superintendent and whoever else they need to, and then we can go from there.
So I, I, I understand your point of view, and you made that, and, and I like to, I will respect that um, on things that aren't as time sensitive, where um, this is more time sensitive. I, in there, there's a motion on the table, so we have to at least, if it doesn't get a second, then it's the will of the committee to not support this motion. But if it gets a second, we do procedurally need to vote on it. Um, so I, I, I'm happy to, you know, if we, if, however this shakes out, and then say, we'll have policy meet with legal to work on the wording. Um, but I, I don't want um, to let this realistically go a couple of weeks when I think that this is a very important um, mitigation factor other districts are using. Um, so that's why I made the policy. And again, it can be the will of the committee to, to not support it, or um, or we can vote on it.
And I just want to be 100% clear. I'm not saying I don't support it. What I'm saying is I don't, I, I am, I don't think it's in our best interest to make policy decisions on the fly.
Okay. We don't have a second yet.
Is there a second?
Okay, so let the record show, no one seconded a motion.
Yep. But if you, if we're going to say, let the record show, no one is saying that they don't support this. But I do think that we need to be thoughtful about when we are making changes and make sure that we're getting the recommendation from our superintendent and from, you know, our health experts in our district. And we also have to be very clear that we are following protocols, and we are making sure that safety protocols are in place while also considering confidentiality of our students. And there is a, you know, a balancing act there, which is why I think it deserves some conversation. Now, that's just my opinion.
Well, legal has been consulted on this. I only know because of a first, my personal situation. Uh, but legal has been, and our legal team has given a determination on this, which all of our administration is aware of.
Okay, so that's information, Sarah, that you have that the rest of the committee does not. And once again, I don't think that this is the right process to go through in making decisions like this.
So much like the nurse uh, conversation, the additional nurse conversation. I think, you know, the committee has obviously, you know, stated a, a thought. And if Dr. Bucky and Deanna and Joseph and any other nurses um, within the district think that that would be helpful, or that that is warranted, that, you know, it hasn't been up until this point. But if that, it, you know, at any point we get to that, that place, that they would bring that recommendation to us. Um, and, and to the policy subcommittee and the policy subcommittee can take it up immediately. And um, you know, and again, Sarah, you are correct. You know, we have in time-sensitive COVID policies, we have brought them for a single read um, at, at only a school committee meeting. So, you know, that, that, that too can happen. All right, um, I think that is it uh, for the COVID protocol, mitigation protocols. Um, so the next item up is the, um, Deanna and Joseph, thank you very much. Thank you for being with us this evening, um, staying on with us and uh, providing all the information that you have, as well as thank you generally for, you know, all the work that you're doing. We appreciate it. Um, okay, so the school committee evaluations and goals. Um, we had in our Dropbox, Emily had tallied things into a tally sheet that showed without um, saying who, you know, stated what. She had the tallies for everything and then the average. And then um, I think later in the day, uh, it was dropped in the, the actual evaluation tool with the averages put in um, on the lines next to them. So I will just kind of open this up for conversation. Um, I haven't looked it over in great detail, so if we want to bring this back up at our next meeting, we can do so. Uh, maybe this informs kind of where we take our goals and come and come to the next meeting with some thoughts on goals for the school committee for this coming year. Um, again, I know this is one of your babies, so I will let you weigh in if you would like.
Uh, I don't know that I have much to add. I mean, I looked like you, you know, I've been through kind of the numbers at a high level. But I think, you know, it is clear that there are some areas for, you know, opportunity for improvement, for sure. And I think that's a great idea, you know, to kind of think about how we tie our goals into this as well as into, you know, district level goals too, to make sure that we're all in alignment. It's just, um, you know, it's the same thing with every year. It's just kind of keeping it top of the conversation. So.
Does anyone else have any thoughts on, on the um, data that was the feedback that's given? Any surprises or anything? Yeah. So as Megan looks, I think the next step for us would be to um, you know, pull up the goals that we had for last year. Um, and, and kind of we, you know, we had talked about this, I believe it was back at the retreat over the summer. Maybe it was at a school committee meeting during the school year. I can't remember at this point. But pull those back up and just kind of look through them. And based on the numbers here, we can, you know, kind of, we've talked a little bit about places where we had done, kind of achieved either parts or all of the goal there. And then parts where maybe we didn't achieve much at all, and then come to the next meeting uh, with some ideas for additional pieces to those goals. Or if we did achieve the, a full goal, you know, kind of other thoughts for, for goals that could be given. Emily, I saw your hand up.
Um, I think that's great. And also, if we could bring up our operating protocols, because some of the questions were about how we work as a group. And it might be good to tie some of the information that we got from the evaluation to update those. Because I think we were talking about with Dorothy to shorten them up. And so maybe we could um, use this data to update those at some point too.
Right, that's a great idea.
Nope. No, I'm happy to help.
I think that's a great idea.
Megan, that was your big thing.
All right, sound good to everybody? It'll give everybody, I know, again, the, the evaluation tool um, was dropped a, a little late in the day. So it'll give everybody a, the ability to kind of go back, think about their own numbers, and uh, look at where the rest of the group came out and, and focus themselves on maybe some good goals, Megan?
So just to be clear, for our next meeting, are we bringing some suggested goals? Can we kind of set a date that everyone gets them into the, the Dropbox? So we all have time to really review them before we discuss? And to answer your question, there's not a lot of surprises, and you know, in, in those numbers, I think communication being one and um, training, another, which we talked about during some of our legal conversations too, so.
So what are we, why don't we shoot for next? And just in, you know, the consistent and continued effort to get things into the Dropbox on Monday. Um, if we can get goals back to, probably Emily, are you going to compile, or do you want me to just?
Or Lisa, can Lisa help?
Yeah, I think, I think it's, we're not.
I can be the compiler.
Okay. Um, all right, so yeah, send it to either Emily or Lisa, and then um, they'll, they can work offline.
So are these our subcommittee goals? Or goals?
No, school committee goals.
Oh.
Committee goals, yes.
So I'm going to add upfront, I'm, I'm um, out of town tomorrow through next Friday. Um, and off, you know, off the grid per se, without access to things. Um, so I, I'm not going to be able to, to turn that around in that time, but um, I just wanted to.
I think if you can get them in, then, you know, by Sunday, you know, so that, again, that we can have them in by Monday or Tuesday of that week. Um, and you know, if the rest of us are able to get them in on time, then adding one person's thoughts shouldn't be. I don't, I don't anticipate, I don't think you need to kind of formulate them into goals. I think you just need to put everybody's thoughts down um, and suggestions.
So just when you get them, Sarah, just send them to me.
All right. Anything else on that? Any updates? From subcommittees and liaisons?
So um, for the facilities committee, I had spoken with um, Michelle, who has been working with Todd. But Todd's been pretty out straight with getting ready for Brown. And they had asked that we push off um, our, our meeting because there was no way that Todd would have time to look through and, and, and do. And I think we all completely understand that. He's, he's going full force to get us online at Brown um, until the end of October. Um, so I, I talked to Emily offline, and, and she was completely fine with this, and we, I think we all understand that.
Absolutely. Um, Megan, you guys already gave a, a budget update, correct? And Michelle kind of covered it. You're muted.
I, oh.
With David?
No, go ahead, Megan.
Um, I don't have a budget update, but I do have a quick CPAC one, and I'm sure I'm not going to forget something. But also um, the Village SACs, so from a CPAC perspective, one of the things that I just wanted to highlight is I think, John, you're going to be meeting with them in early November to go through the planning for success, but focusing in on some of the, the themes and how they might impact our special education. I mean, not just our special education families, but you know, there are a few that they're particularly focused on. So there'll be some, you know, more information coming out about that, but I did just kind of want to plant that seed there. Um, also, the Village SAC, you guys know, my favorite meeting of the month. Um, that was today, and there was, you know, it was, it's a great group and some really good conversation and feedback from families and, you know, parents and teachers and administration. But one thing that did come up that I did want to mention here is that there is still a need for three lunch pairs at Village. Um, so if there are any parents or community members who are interested in that role, um, they did specifically call out that it is different than it, than it was last year. Um, so it is a two-hour commitment. I think they said 10:45 to 12:45. Um, and you know, it's grade by grade, so kind of fourth grade goes out, then fifth grade, then sixth grade. So it's not like everyone's out there at once. There are staff members out there as well, but it just would be a great way to help support that school. So any parents or families, um, you know, get in touch with, I'm guessing, John, Mandy, or Lisa, or our new HR person on that. So if we could try to support the Village School there, that would be great.
And that's a paid position, again, correct?
It's a question for John.
Yeah, yeah. Last year, we were relying on parent volunteers because of everything with COVID, but this year it's back to, again, the more normal pace of it with the, you know, a little bit more uh, to it, and it is paid, a paid position. David, did you want to weigh in on anything?
I did.
Before the building update?
Right.
I'll let you finish last with the building update.
Before we get to the, the building update, if you can just, in the process of this, share, allow me to share my screen. So the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee met Monday night. Um, I think it's, it was a really good meeting to introduce, um, I think four or five new FinCom members. And they had their reorganization vote. So congratulations to those members that are now uh, Chair by, and two co-chairs. And the new, the new members. And there was an overview of, that was provided for the members, basically of, um, it was almost a state-of-the-town presentation that happens in January. So I um, had sent a request to Emily Belfecker to get a copy of that present. And um, as soon as I get that, I'll share it with everybody. I thought it was pretty. And it sets, sets the stage um, budget process and understanding, you know, where the town is going and, and where the risks are and what things are unsustainable in the current environment that they're, that they're in. So I thought that was a, I thought it was a very good presentation. The other piece for us to consider as a district, and I had um, all I was able to do was get a screenshot. Emily has sent it to me since. And I didn't have time to forward it to the committee, but um, they're looking to um, change the schedule of how we do budgeting, which overall, I think it's a good thing. Uh, you, you know, I start doing, you know, I work on the same academic calendar, and we start doing some budget planning in November and work in January and February. And so I think uh, in this case, I'll leave it for other people to, you know, say what they think. But I, you know, they're, they're looking to step up the process of starting the budget process earlier. And I think in the first pass, I'm in support of that. I think that's a good thing. I think, you know, last year was the exception with everything that was going on, not being able to meet in person. But, you know, thinking about all the years prior, having been involved in budgets. Um, we can certainly take the time to be a little more thoughtful and, and work through it. Um, with that, come the, the year-over-year challenge that everybody knows is we, we, we don't hear from the, from the House and the Senate and state funding and its, its assumptions, and we don't know until May or June. And sometimes it's never after town meeting, but I don't think that's ever going to change. So I think with that, you know, we have made conservative assumptions based on the information that we know. But I think it will um, allow us, especially this year, to start thinking about our strategic planning and what the needs are of the town and what the needs are of the school district. Instead of, you know, starting to work through those things in February. And then, as we all know, we had a compressed schedule of trying to meet, you know, every, every Thursday in February and March. And then it was school vacation, and, you know, so I think it's a good process that they're trying to work through to give um, to expand that schedule a little bit and be a little bit more thoughtful. Um, of course, a lot of this falls on Michelle's shoulders because as we start our budget development, everybody knows it's the, you know, your staffing, and what are your stepping lanes changes, and what are our contractual obligations? And then, and then we build on it from there. So I just wanted to throw that out there, and I think um, that's been shared with Dr. Bucky and Michelle since um, the Monday meeting. So in the next uh, month, we'll have more to report on that. And um, you know, there's going to be an effort, I think, to, to work through the, the budget process a little bit earlier than starting in, say, you know, the end of January. And I, I think that's a good thing. So just wanted to update everybody on that meeting.
Thanks, David. Um, policy met on Tuesday, and if I had had my act together, we would have a few policies on the agenda for this evening. But um, stay tuned, we're just continuing to work through uh, making edits as, as seem necessary. And uh, so there'll be a few that will come up. Um, nothing, you know, nothing that's earth-shattering. Um, so we'll, we'll get to that next meeting. Um, Megan, did you?
Well, are you done with your?
I was going to talk a smidge about the high school SACs.
Okay, sorry, go ahead.
Um, so as I've mentioned a couple of times, the high school SAC met for the first time today. Uh, we went over just kind of some of the ground norms and everything. Um, I too really enjoy being on that group. Um, and I think one of the, you know, the interesting conversations that happened at the end is I kind of alluded to about staff support and everything. But just the general, you know, there's been a few incidents lately, um, particularly at the high school concerning social media and racism and homophobia. Um, and so, you know, kind of Dan, Dan allowed for a space to kind of have that conversation uh, within that group that has teachers and community members and parents and students um, all, all in a room together. And we actually were able to meet in person, um, so that was really great too. Uh, and so, you know, just kind of, you know, as we work with, as a district to fully support every, every piece of, of, of who we are um, and, and where our students are at and, and what's going on inside, as well as, you know, outside the classroom, because that ends up coming in. So um, you know, I was, I was really grateful to Dan for creating that space and allowing for that conversation to happen this, this afternoon. Okay, Megan, now I'm done.
Thank you. Um, so we talked a couple of weeks ago about every, all the subcommittees getting on to a regular cadence of meeting schedules and times. And so if we could, I'd really like to post that out on our website. So what Lisa did today is there is a one pager that has all our school committee meetings on there, just so it's easy to find, rather than having to. So what Lisa did today is there is a one pager that has all our school committee meetings on there, just so it's easy to find rather than having to like go through each month. So we've got that one pager out there. I'd like to add in that cadence for each of our subcommittees. So for example, the budget's gonna, the budget subcommittee will meet the second Tuesday of every month. If, if we can add that in for each subcommittee, it would be helpful for the community, right, to understand when those meetings are on a regular basis. Also for Lisa, because she does help us with the scheduling and the agendas for those meetings in some cases. And then also just kind of keep us accountable. So we're making sure that we do that. So if we could just follow up with Lisa and get that information to her, that would be helpful.
Yeah, so the policy, I, I'm not sure what we're going to do quite yet, because I, we had said the last or the fourth Tuesday of the month, but then I had a conflict la, on that, on that date in September. So we ended up on the first Tuesday, um, of October. So, uh, uh, we talked about it a little bit at the end of our meeting the other day and decided to, to postpone picking that. In, in my thinking, um, we've got, you know, DUCI and the mask mandate piece coming up towards the end of the month. So my guess is that we'll probably end up on the fourth Tuesday. Um, but just kind of, just kind of waiting to see is there's a few moving parts out there, um, as to what makes the most sense and, and not calling a bunch of additional meetings on top of it.
Yeah, no, I think that makes sense. I just don't want to have to have Lisa chase everybody. So if you could just kind of proactively give her that, it'd be helpful.
David, I think you're up.
All right, so, um, everybody can see this hopefully? If I do view, um, full screen, does that work for everybody?
Yes, it's a little bit. Oh, there we go. Yes, there you go.
So this, this is pretty much the final, um, invite that's, um, being presented to everybody. And the committee is meeting tomorrow morning, as Dr. Bucky mentioned, to finalize the, the script and everything that's going on, but, um, encourage everybody to promote this, everybody to come and celebrate, um, October 17th, 2 to 4 P.M. And, um, so there'll be more final information, you know, to, to follow on that. But I think the preceding that is the most important day that's going to come on October 13th. And, um, if I can, um, let's see if this works. Does that? Am I, everybody seeing this screen?
Yep.
I'll give, um, credit to Chris Stevens, but in this case also Left Field, who submitted some photos. So, um, I'll just run through a, a quick script of photos. So here's the, the library and the, and the media center. Here's just a example of the breakout space and the, um, extended learning areas that, that are built in, in the school. This is the, the lighthouse area. As you come into the, to the main entrance, um, here, here's the playground that we heard some, uh, people comment about. Uh, off to the left that you can't see the sod is one of the areas due to the heavy rain that we had. They're looking to finish the sod today, tomorrow and, and Saturday, and if at the latest on Tuesday. But as we know, the playing field will have a temporary fence and, and not be utilized. But it's just, it's just a incredibly, I mean, Sarah, you were there Thursday night and a bunch of people were there. The, the recreational space here, um, is, is just, I think even without the playing field for the next couple of months will be, will be really well received by all the students. And there were some model classrooms. So here we are. There, they were set up. There's the desks, uh, smart boards. You know, there was a demonstration of, by Steve. Um, the teachers have a, have their little mobile cart. They have wireless key, keyboards, so they can leave their computer on their desk and have their keyboard and books and move around the classroom. And they have a lanyard over their neck that will project their voice, so they don't have to worry about kids not being able to hear them. And Steve has gone through every room and validated the technology. So this, this is really exciting. And the, and the colors and, uh, the furniture and fixtures, um, it's just really beautiful. Here's a picture of the gym, which I like this perspective because it goes through this whole cafeteria design where you see the stage in the background and then the cafeteria on the far end. And those areas can be, can be closed off and the beautiful new, um, center court logo. That was designed for the Lucretia and Joseph Brown School and everything else is that's coming together. Another picture of the cafeteria with what will be the famous fish lights and, um, the sailboard, shades along the windows and everything coming together in the cafeteria. And I, I really just think the font and the graphics of this jump out at you when you're coming up. I think as Megan said to me, when you drive up Baldwin Road and you just, you just see it, it, it jumps out at you. And, um, it just makes a real, a real statement. This was, you can sort of see to the left here, that's where the mosaic is, is slowly coming together. This picture was pre, they had started a portion of the mosaic, but they're almost halfway up the wall on the mosaic. It won't be quite finished by Wednesday, but they're, you know, with the, some of the weather delays, but you know, that's work in progress. And I think kids will all be excited to see how that comes together. The interior hallway from, from upstairs to see, you know, the lighting for every, I think every, everybody in the committee's been there. But for people seeing it, it's, um, just bright and light and, um, makes really good use of the space. And then this is the, the, the main entryway that leads down the corridor to the cafeteria and down to the gymnasium. Once again, it's bright, it's light, the windows that lead out to the, um, to the arrival area for buses and students and drop off. And this area to the left, you know, Steve will be in, putting a smart board in here that will have daily activities going on in the school. And then the other areas will have various things posted for the school. So, um, yeah, um, be there or be square Wednesday, um, eight o'clock. It's on the 13th. It's all going to happen. The team is, um, they did the first move on Saturday for teachers, um, things. There was a few hiccups there, but thanks to Todd Bloodgood and his staff for stepping in and helping out. The final move is, is this Saturday, the, as we said at the beginning, and Sarah Fox pointed out, the custodians are working overtime. Um, they're there to support the initiatives. The, the teachers are there on overtime. As John said, Sean has been trying to give teachers free time during the day so they can get over and set up their classrooms. And, um, that's where it's at. So the clock is ticking. And, um, so I hope everybody can have a chance to be there to see all of the mayhem and excitement of opening day. There'll be some confusion and wondering where people are going to go. And there might be a smart board or two that doesn't work, but I actually, I don't, actually, I think all the smart boards are going to work. I mean, Steve's really, um, been there and, you know.
They'll all work.
They'll all work, Steve, exactly. And, uh, it's just, it's, it's amazing. So, um, it's, it's exciting. And so, uh, looking forward to Wednesday.
So the teachers and the staff are doing a phenomenal job about getting the kids ready for the transition. They had a little preview for students yesterday afternoon who were, who were students that might have, had, for whatever reason, have a little bit harder time with a, a large transition like this. So they brought them in in small groups and showed them their spaces. And, and it was really exciting for, um, any, any of the kids that were involved in that. I got to see, you know, my two and, and it was really, really exciting for them for that. Um, and I just know, you know, I'm seeing a lot of at the teacher level, them little by little in age appropriate ways, getting them ready for the idea that they're leaving, you know, where they are and going somewhere new. And, um, I continually am impressed with our staff.
Yeah. It's really good. And, um, I'll probably say, get a chance to say it again, but I'd just like to thank this opportunity also to recognize the building committee. A lot of the members of the committee have been at it for over five years since 2016. Left Field was the first, uh, team that we, that we brought on to the project. And then RDA came on following that. And after RDA, we, we brought on Gilbane. And, um, I don't know what I'm going to do with all my free time. A great team to work with. And, um, uh, you know, the building committee aside, you know, Katie Martin's working on some of the final details with Sarah on the outdoor organic gardens and planter boxes. And everybody's just stepping up to help where they can. Uh, and I can't say enough, uh, about Ralph Wallace, the, the, our Vice Chair. Ralph has been on site at least three days a week. Uh, the Saturdays when they've been doing work, Ralph's been there keeping an eye on the project, uh, pointing out things, asking the, the appropriate questions, following up for the district. And, um, you know, Ralph has just been, he's been amazing for this project. And, you know, there'll be other opportunities, but I, I just really want to thank Ralph for all that he's doing. And, um, you know, just everybody, everybody involved has been, and you know, Tuesday, the new police chief was there with Todd going through the safety features of the entryway. And, um, it's, it, it's just an overall, it's a, it's a town effort. And, um, it wouldn't have happened without a true Marblehead Town Effort. And when I was at the Judy Jacoby and Judy and Jean Jacoby event, um, you know, if people were talking about Joe Qualick from Marblehead Light, Mike, Mike Hull were there. And they supported the underground power that came up Dartmouth Road and the powering of the school. I mean, it's just, um, it's just been a team project. So let's, um, enjoy the long weekend and, you know, here it is.
See you, see you Wednesday morning.
Yeah, it's, it's just, I, I'm, it's going to be really, really exciting. And thank you, Dr. Bucky for, and Sean. And, um, just, uh, for, for being engaged in the project. It's, it's just really super exciting.
I feel, David, I feel like you need to borrow a kid for drop off on Wednesday.
Yeah, in some way, shape or form, right? You know, if I-
Tell Ryan to come home for the day.
Yeah, you know, I want to bring his, I, I want to bring some artwork for display though. I am going to do that. That was a call out, a shout out. We, we, there's all these beautiful displays. And so since they're empty now until the kids get in there, um, we wanted to try and, you know, if you've attended the school or maybe you have a child and second or third, you have their artwork. We want to put some temporary artwork in these beautiful displays. And then the, the Marblehead Rocks, Dr. Bucky, we haven't talked about that. Those rocks are showing up at the school, right? People are painting their rocks and, uh, you know, that, that's been a great idea. And people are leaving rocks in the front of the school, so.
Yeah, they look great. That has been a wonderful initiative. Chris Stevens promoted it out today. I know that, uh, Jackie Belfecker did a rock. There have been neighborhood groups that have sponsored rock painting parties. So it really is a nice effort. I'm, I'm glad that it's taken off.
It's a notable, noticeable touch when you walk, when you walk in. It looks really good.
Yeah. It's great.
All right, very exciting. As I said, we'll see everyone Wednesday morning. Any closing business or any new business, sorry? All right, um, the only piece of correspondence that I wanted to highlight, John also highlighted, was the speaker from, for the Counseling Center. Um, that's going to be on the 19th. So I just think, you know, that's, that there's been a large outcry on this type of thing in the counseling centers stepping up and, and hosting these, these, um, handful of events. Um, so it's, it should be, should be good. So that brings us to adjournment and I will adjourn us at 9:23. Thank you, everyone.